The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. With that, we'll call the April 7, 2025 Situate School Committee meeting to order here at 6 o'clock. We're going to start with public comment as related to the other agenda items, not our special presentation. We wanted to give people an opportunity for a public comment that looked nicely with that. So, we will start first with our student report.
Yes, yes, yes. It's your special spot. Hello, thank you for having us.
I am Willis Ames. My first meeting, super excited to be here. Also, some updates from the school. Sports-wise, spring sports are underway with a large number of athletes competing this spring. This spring broke records for athletic performance in one season for the high school, so best of luck to all of our student athletes this spring season. Situate High School sophomores took the English MCAS exam on Tuesday, March 25th, and Wednesday, March 26th. Thank you to Mrs. Kirk, Mrs. Messner, and all of the sophomore students who have done such an awesome job on the exam. Situate High School hosted the freshman-sophomore dance on Friday, March 28th, at the Community Center. Junior and junior parents attended a Situate Facts pre-prom event last Tuesday. The informational presentation was from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the SHS library. Grades for Term III closed on Friday, and report cards will be issued on Wednesday. Our robotics team competed in Springfield, April 2nd through April 5th, and the team continues to have an outstanding season. Principal Ranger is hosting his second annual AP breakfast on Wednesday, April 16th, for any students taking at least one AP course. Situate High School has 364 students taking at least one AP. All AP students and their families are welcome to attend the breakfast. Boys &amp; Girls State is a week-long convention which teaches students about government and civics. It's a great experience. I went last summer, and over this past week, this summer's SHS representative students have been chosen. For the boys, we have Cole Lavens, Patrick McCarthy, and Matthew Monahan as an alternate, and for the girls, we have Angelica Cajum, Alexa Tracy, and Olivia Crone as an alternate.
Thank you. And on to our Sailor of the Month updates. For all of you who don't know, Sailors of the Month can be nominated by teachers, or peers, or staff who feel that someone in the school has made the community better. So, for March Sailors of the Month, we have Bill McNeil, Braden Fonseca, Quinn Corkins, Shay Tinkman, Finn O'Donnell, Quinn DeCoursey, Jake Linnell, and Elizabeth Francie. So, congratulations to everyone. And in guidance news, this past week, the counseling department hosted the Stress Less, Laugh More Week from March 17th into 21st, and it was a huge success this year. This initiative began in 2016, and it engages students, faculty, and stress-relieving activities during the school day. The goal is to raise awareness of mental wellness, encouraging students to develop and utilize healthy coping strategies, and promoting connectedness, and reducing stigma and promoting health-seeking behavior for mental health. On Friday, March 28th, Ms. Hassett and Ms. Kamani took a group of 40 juniors to the NAACP College Fair in Boston. Students had the opportunity to hear from a wide number of college admissions offices. Over the past two weeks, Situate High School counselors met individuals, all rising 10th through 12th grade students, to review their course selections for next year. In the meetings, counselors reviewed graduation requirements and worked with students to map out their academic plans. Shout out to their counselors, and thank you. Any questions for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Ms. Brinley. Good evening, everyone. This is one of the biggest crowds we've had in a while. And I know you're all here waiting for number seven, policy number U-N-V-E. Let's get the small stuff out of the way. In all seriousness, I'm really honored, I'm proud of such a turnout tonight, to acknowledge Principal of the Year, Mr. Beatty, who is at the head table tonight. Thought of some of the things we could do to embarrass him, and also honor him at the same time. So, welcome, Mr. Beatty. I'm going to say a few words, and we've got some other folks that want to also speak up, and then we'll have a comment opportunity for anybody in the audience or online that would like to say a few words about Mr. Beatty, because I think we could all go on for a long, long time. But I do want to thank some guests that we invited here tonight, on a busy night, made it here. We appreciate that, whether online or in person. I want to thank our turn administrator, Mr. Jim Boudreaux, select board members Karen Canfield, Karen Conley, Susan Harrison, Andrew Goodrich, and Jamie Gilmore for being here tonight. I know you've got another meeting probably tomorrow, and many more, so it's really important you're here, because this is a community event. It's so good to see this energy in the room tonight. I also want to thank Ms. Smith, our Assistant Principal at Gates, who will be here tonight, saying a few words soon. A couple of our great students, we'll have Mason McCauley and Beatrice here will also be up here. I want to thank their families also for coming tonight. I thank you for that. That's a surprise, but I teased it a little bit there. Just our amazing school committee who have supported our district and our principals all along, and I know Mr. Beatty feels supported, challenged, and proud to be here tonight. Our staff, administrators, and teachers who are in the audience now, who are obviously a byproduct of this great school in Gates that Mr. Beatty is proud to be the principal of. Again, he was the first one to say it when I shared the news with him, was that, oh, it's all of us, and it's not just me. He was very humbled, obviously. I wasn't surprised by that response, but it is very true of the culture at Gates that not only Mr. Beatty, but the entire administrative team, staff, and students and families, it's just magical there, and it's good to acknowledge it. And I also want to thank Representative Patrick Kearney, who's here tonight, who'll probably speak a little bit. So, just a few words about Mr. Beatty, my thoughts. It's with immense pride and joy that I congratulate Mr. Beatty on receiving the Massachusetts School Administrators Association 2025 Principal of the Year Award. I wrote my notes somewhere, there's close to 1,800 public middle schools. We've got the one, 1,800 to one, and this process is extremely well-vetted, challenging, difficult, you have to go through a lot to earn it, and so I just wanted to mention how difficult it is, and how uncommon it is. So, congratulations, Mr. Beatty. This prestigious award is a testament to Principal Beatty's unwavering commitment to the students, staff, and entire Gates community. It recognizes exceptional leadership, his innovative approach to education, and his genuine passion for fostering and nurturing empowering learning environment. Principal Beatty, your vision, your dedication, and your tireless efforts have transformed Gates Middle School into a place where students thrive, where teachers are inspired, and where families feel valued. Your ability to connect with each and every student, to understand their unique needs, and to empower them to reach their full potential is truly remarkable, and certainly does not go unnoticed. But this achievement is not solely Principal Beatty's. As I mentioned, it's a reflection of the collective spirit and dedication of the entire Gates Middle School community, and so I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our incredible students, who bring their energy, their curiosity, and their unique talents to our school every day. You are the heart and soul of Gates Middle School, and your success is our greatest reward. Our exceptional staff, whose dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to excellence makes Gates Middle School a truly special place to be, their hard work and collaboration are the foundation of our success. Our supportive families, whose partnership and involvement are invaluable. Your trust and support empower us to provide the best possible education for your children, our children. Our engaged community, whose commitment to our schools enriches the lives of our students and strengthens our town. And the Situate Select Board School Committee, Town Administrator, and community members for your unwavering support and commitment to education in our town. Your dedication to providing our students with resources they need to succeed, as well as Principal Beatty and his team, is deeply appreciated. Principal Beatty, your leadership has fostered a culture of collaboration, innovation, and excellence. You have created a school where students feel safe, supported, and empowered to learn and grow. You have inspired us all as you strive for excellence, and you have made Gates Middle School a beacon of educational excellence in Massachusetts. On behalf of the entire community, we congratulate you, Principal Ryan Beatty, on this well-deserved honor. We are incredibly proud to have you as our leader, and we look forward to many more years of your exceptional leadership. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that Assistant Principal of Gates Middle School, Ms. Jill Smith, come on up, please.
I've never sat at a table with a microphone in front of me like this. No peeking. I'm Jill Smith, the Assistant Principal of Gates Middle School. When I was hired, and actually before I was hired, last year, everyone told me how amazing Mr. Beatty is. My predecessor, Sam Lesniak, hit the nail on the head when she described Ryan Beatty as "the real deal." After working closely with him for the last two years, and laughing, and learning a lot from him every single day, I can see what all the buzz was about. Mr. Beatty is an outstanding middle school principal and incredibly deserving of this award. A big theme of the coursework when you're getting your master's in school leadership is the importance of school culture. School culture is an underlying force that influences and shapes the school climate. A positive school culture fosters a sense of belonging, promotes academic achievement, and supports the well-being of all individuals involved in the educational process. It's an essential component of a healthy and effective learning environment. A positive school culture directly correlates to a successful middle school. The tricky thing about a positive school culture is you can't just flick a switch to make it happen, or just declare it as so. It involves staffs, students, and families. Part of what makes Mr. Beatty an outstanding principal is what he has done and continues to do on a daily basis to foster the positive culture that exists at Gates. He's incredibly approachable, patient, thorough, and thoughtful in his work. He supports caregivers and students as they navigate through the three years of incredible growth. He also supports faculty and staff working with students during these often challenging middle school years. Whenever there's a building-wide initiative, there's no shortage of faculty members who step up. Kids don't want to leave Gates at the end of the day. They don't. Yes, these teenagers love the school so much that they may find many reasons to remain well after dismissal. I've never worked at a middle school where there are at least 10 staff members who volunteer to spend their Friday night at a school dance, and this is all directly attributed to the climate and culture that Mr. Beatty has worked hard to build. The family, students, and staff at Gates are lucky to have him. Congratulations, Mr. Beatty. Next up, we have two outstanding members of the Gates community. We have two eighth-grade students here today to speak about Mr. Beatty. We have Bee Hare and Mason McCauley. You guys, what's going on?
Hi, I'm Bee Hare, and I'm here at Gates, and I'm so happy to be here to congratulate Mr. Beatty on receiving this award. Every morning, rain or shine, Mr. Beatty stands out front of the car drop-off, greeting all of the students. Whether it's just a quick wave or a deeper conversation, the simple gesture signals to all of us that each and every one of us is welcome and supportive when we walk through those doors. Mr. Beatty has created a safe and supportive environment for all of the students and teachers to do their best work. He leads with fairness and kindness. All of us at Gates know how lucky we are to have the best principal, but it's exciting that it has been formally recognized for all of the state to now.
Hi, I'm Mason McCauley, and I'm here at Gates. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize Mr. Beatty as Massachusetts Middle School Principal of the Year. Massachusetts is known for its exceptional public education, thanks to the effort of all the hard-working principals across the state. Mr. Beatty is a perfect example of one of these people that have given Massachusetts his reputation. There are many qualified people who could have won this award, but if you know Mr. Beatty, you would not be surprised that he was chosen. Mr. Beatty always has everyone's best interest at heart. He's extremely selfless. He works hard to ensure that every kid has as many opportunities as possible to find what they're passionate about, get involved in clubs and activities. He's really dedicated to making the school a better place for every student. He demonstrates extreme patience when working with kids, something that not everyone can do. He ensures that everyone always follows the rules, and he's demonstrating the Gates core values, but is always very calm and never says his voice at anyone. Mr. Beatty, the person who stands out in the cold to wish you a good morning. Mr. Beatty, the person I have no doubt deserves Massachusetts Middle School Principal of the Year.
I'm good.
Or not?
I'll just stand here. Members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Superintendent Burkhead, members of the select board, parents, teachers, students, we're all here to celebrate you, Mr. Beatty. I just got back from Ways and Means hearing an out-of-borrow high school, I left a little early, to come present a citation from a host of representatives to recognize what you do every day. As they said, "Look at the showing of a school today." Students, teachers, faculty, members of the select board, school committee members, one out of 1,800 middle schools in the state. You make this community a better place. You foster a learning environment where these students are not just students, you're prepping them to be high school students that are then active, civically engaged, positive citizens that continue to give back to the community, and that legacy is going to live on for generations that far surpass the lifespan of all of us. So, myself and Senator O'Connor have the opportunity every week to read into the official record citations and congratulations to recognize significant milestones for people in our community. So, today I have a citation from myself, Representative Kearney, Speaker of the House, and all of the members, that recognizes your dedication, your commitment, and your love for this community. So, if you don't mind, I know we clapped earlier, but if you could all join me in a round of applause.
I'll turn it over to my colleagues, if anyone on the school committee would like to say a few words, specifically Ms. Benwick.
All right, I did write something. I couldn't let the occasion pass, but while I'm reading, maybe Mr. Beatty would like to open his gifts. Those are from us. There was a card, and also a little plant, but also something that we hope you'll find even more special than a plant. So, maybe I'll do that while I'm reading. So, having been myself in over 100 schools, I can attest that the Gates Middle School is very special. As others have noted, there's certainly a vibe. Kids are happy, teachers are happy, and has been mentioned multiple times already tonight, Mr. Beatty himself is always outside of a smile, even in the coldest of temperatures and on the rainiest of mornings. I think it's easy to look at this and say simply, wow, you know, Gates is the happiest middle school on the planet. And it might be, but that, I think, really oversimplifies the work that goes into making that. So, just this weekend, Schnippel and I had the privilege to be at a national school board conference. It was really great, and one of the sessions that I attended reminded me of some research by John Hattie on collective teacher efficacy. So, Ryan, you might know this, but that's the degree to which teachers will believe that they collectively make a difference for their students. And his research finds really enormous, actually, statistical correlations between measures of teacher efficacy and student achievement and growth. And I say this because the happiness at Gates isn't accidental, and it's not surface. It's a signal of something both deeper and more meaningful for our students, our teachers, and indeed our community. To quote Hattie's research, "A school staff that believes it can collectively accomplish great things is vital for the health of the school. And if teachers believe they can make a positive difference, then they very likely will." So, thank you very much, Mr. Beatty, for everything you've done and will continue to do to make Gates such a fantastic place to learn, grow, teach, and leave, and visit, if you're one of us.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Maria Ella Quale talked about your effect on teachers and the students, obviously. I guess I would say, as a newish middle school parent, I would be remiss if I didn't mention how important you've been to the caregivers and families and the community. It would be very easy, as an experienced and seasoned principal, when you have a new, a parent of a new middle schooler walking into your office several times, to shrug it off and not act like this is a big thing. But I felt like, you know, for me personally, each time I walked into your office to have a conversation, I felt like it was the first time you were hearing the thing I was sharing. And I think that is an exceptional gift, because I know I wasn't the first time you were hearing this thing. So, I just want to say, for all the families, the parents, the caregivers, the grandparents, the neighbors that contribute to our kids' education, just a heartfelt thank you for also treating us like we were the first time you were hearing that. So, thanks, Ryan.
I'm going to go way back to when I was lucky enough to be on the interview committee for the next Gates principal, and I will never, ever forget how impressed I was by your interview, and how I was like, "We don't hire this guy." Out of our minds, because you clearly were made to be an educator and help kids, and I just want you to know how touched I was, and literally will never forget that.
Well, thank you. Pretty much echoing what Carrie said, just thank you, I guess, from a personal note for obviously taking in my two boys, and as a reward, I'm going to send you two more, really. So, everyone, you know, I can't echo enough everyone's sentiments, and we're really, really just proud of you, and, you know, so lucky to have you here. I would love to invite anyone who would like to speak, if you want to come up to the sit next to Mr. Ryan. Oh, yes, we have some virtual, anyone who wants to speak virtually as well. Okay, should be good, John.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Hey, so, John Scopoletti, parent of a seventh grader and eighth grader at Gates, also a former colleague of Mr. Beatty. I'm going to keep it brief. Patience and grace. I say that again, patience and grace. Ryan, those were things that you preached. I remember those dark days of COVID. You said, "If we stick to those two things, we're going to be okay," and you were right. And you didn't just preach it, though, you helped others reach it, and you continue to help others reach it. And I know for myself, as I progress in my career as a leader, I keep trying to go back to those two words, and I hold to those in your example. So, I want to thank you for that, and again, you're just the epitome of patience and grace in your role, and so lucky, so fortunate, as a colleague and as a parent caregiver, to have had that experience with you. So, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, John.
One of the things that has been spoken about is your care of family and students, and I want to speak to the care that you take care of, that you give so graciously to your staff. The word that comes to mind is faith. The belief that you have in every single person in that building, and what they can bring to the community, is reflected in the faith that we have in your leadership. We've been through some pretty tough times. I can't think of one of the moments that tested us most, where we didn't believe in what you told us, because we were purely reflecting the faith that you put in us. So, yeah, good job.
Not seeing any more virtual hands raised. Anyone else care to? I'm sitting next to Ryan. Okay. All right, should be unmuted.
Hi, this is Chris Beatty, Ryan's little brother, calling in from New York City. I had to embarrass him and join tonight. Our father, Paul, is also in the room. Our other brother, PJ, is watching. On behalf of our family, we're just so proud of Ryan. He's always looked at his career more as a vocation than a job, and that's evidenced by him forcing us to play school down in our basement as we've been growing up and grading our papers. But congratulations, Ryan. We're so proud of you. We know our late mom is proud of you as well. Keep doing what you're doing, and, yeah, we love you very much.
You have one more opportunity, and then we'll... That Ryan will be renowned, so... Oh, yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, okay, looking like we're here. Ryan, I'm going to say a few words.
Thank you. All right, well, this is wonderful, and I appreciate all the kind words from everyone. Good evening, members of the school committee, members of the select board, Superintendent Burkhead, teachers, staff, students. It is truly an honor to sit here before you as the recipient of this year's MSAA Massachusetts Middle School Principal of the Year Award. While I'm incredibly grateful for this recognition, I want to make it clear that this is not just my award. This is a reflection of the hard work and dedication of everyone who makes our school such a special place. First, I'd like to thank Superintendent Burkhead for nominating me for this award. Superintendent Burkhead, your support and encouragement over the past six years has been inspiring, and I continue to learn a great deal from you every day. Being acknowledged by my peers throughout the Commonwealth has been a humbling experience, and it serves as a reminder of just how important the work is that educational leaders do. But let's be honest, being Principal of the Year isn't something you do alone. It takes a whole team of people, students, teachers, staff, families, everyone working together to create a community where everyone can succeed. I want to start by recognizing our educators. They bring their passion, creativity, and expertise to our classrooms each and every day. It's not just about teaching content, it's about inspiring our students to think critically, challenge themselves, and always strive to be their best. I'm constantly in awe of the dedication they show, and I'm fortunate to work alongside such a talented group. I also want to take a moment to thank our support staff, who show up every day and make everything run smoothly. From our custodial team, who work tirelessly to maintain a clean and safe environment, and they're upset with me right now because of our dance on Friday night, but I will come out of the floor, I promise. To our office staff, who handle the many behind-the-scenes tasks that make our school function. Every individual in this group is truly the backbone of our school. They make sure that everything is in place so that we can focus on what really matters, which is helping our students to succeed. Of course, none of this would be possible without our incredible students. Every single day, I'm inspired by their curiosity, their creativity, and their drive to learn. They inspire me every single day, from their endless curiosity to their ability to ask questions that make me stop and say, "Wow, you know, I've never really thought about it that way." They're the reason we all come to work every day, and they motivate me to be a better leader. They're growth, not just academically, but personally, as individuals, is what makes my job so rewarding. My fellow administrators and colleagues, I'm grateful for your support and collaboration. Leadership is never a solo effort, it's about working together and learning from each other. We all share the same goal, to ensure that our students have the best possible opportunities to succeed, and I am proud to have worked alongside each of you for the past 18 years to make that happen in the Situate Public Schools. While receiving this award is an incredible honor, I want to remind everyone... While receiving this award is an incredible honor, I want to remind everyone that it's a reflection of our entire community. It's a testament to the culture that we've all created, a culture where we believe in each other, where we hold ourselves to high expectations, and where we never stop working to improve. And of course, I could never do this without the support of my family, my mom and my dad, my brothers, my niece and my nephew, and my little dog, Mabel. They've been there for me every step of the way, and I'm truly grateful for the love and encouragement they provide me. So in closing, I want to say thank you. Thank you to our students, our staff, our families, and our community. This award belongs to all of us, and I look forward to continuing to work together to make our school and district an even better place for everyone. I'm excited for what's ahead, and I'm grateful to be a part of this amazing community.
All right, I think we're gonna take just a five-minute recess to recap ourselves. If anyone wants to, just take Ryan for a minute or two. Let's do that, and then we'll convene in five, seven minutes.
Thank you, guys.
The new Cushing Hathaway. Sorry about that. Turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead with a discussion on the naming of the new Cushing Hathaway.
Thank you. So some exciting times coming up in the new building project, the Hallie Cushing Building Project. And one of them, we mentioned initially, but haven't got back to it, is that now's the time to start having a conversation about what the name of the new school will be. So my, after speaking with many people and talking to our team, my recommendation would be that the kids have a say in what the new name of the school is, and something, some kind of a process where it's very student-driven and student-centered. Ultimately, the school committee would need to approve and vote any name, obviously. But my recommendation and rationale would be the, the goal would be to begin a student-centered process of naming our new school in mascot while maintaining the pride, memories, and history of the two current schools. So that would be the challenge and the task at hand. So working independently, a small group of representative members of our community to work on that and then report back to the committee on recommendations, in which the committee would have time to make the opportunity. But coming from the kids, I think would be powerful, and a part of a few districts have done that very successfully. But the process needs to be worked, obviously, to be inclusive. So my recommendation would be that the committee establish a working group of stakeholders to take on the mission and report recommendations to the committee for the official approval and vote. And I can help, you know, oversight, manage that as far as timelines go, as far as updates for the committee, as you need, input, feedback, all that type of stuff. So that's kind of part one of the naming. Get your feedback on that, and if you are okay to move forward with that process.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Any members in the committee?
I guess just a clarifying question. So I love the idea of the student-centered and even community-centered, right? I know we had, I don't know if it was the athletic director who came and talked to us about how the hockey teams came up with that, so I'm imagining that sort of process. Do you foresee, as you work out the process, do you imagine coming back to us to tell us what your final plan is for process, or will the group do that? Like, what do you?
I think either or.
Okay.
I think I'd get the direction from me, keep you posted, and then send, we've got this, this, and this done, what would you like to see? I could do regular updates simply, or if we're at a point now where we're getting close, maybe, before the process stage, we could have the representatives or chairs, if we have co-chairs of that committee, come in and report out, answer questions, I think, stuff.
Yeah.
Or if, you know, you're telling me tonight that you'd like, I think it would be smart, and once we finish the process, before we move forward with it, get your approval for that, because I think that's a major piece of it, right?
Yeah.
How are we gonna communicate this? How are we gonna roll this out? So the idea is one thing, but it's actual, you know, the devil's in the details and some of this stuff. So getting your feedback on that, I think, would be the next general.
I think that's what I'm thinking about. So like, I feel like the spirit of what you're suggesting feels good.
Right.
I would just love for us to see, even if it's draft, like what the plan is.
Concept.
Because the other thing we can do to serve is like, we all have different sort of folks that we see around town, so what better way to communicate than for us to have a clarity on what the process is, so we can help you with that, too.
That'd be great.
I guess just one clarifying question. Just the, I think it's the idea of two, two parents, two teachers, is it one from each school or two from each school? One from each school?
So what the committee has, that the committee doesn't have, is just my outline of some thoughts on that. So what my thought was to have representatives from each school equally.
I think, yeah.
Cushing and Hathaway on both, on everything. Parents, community members, teachers, support staff, administrators, whatever we decide. About making the committee too huge, but also making it, you know, it's a good opportunity, I think, to start bringing the two school communities together.
Yeah.
To make decisions and working together as a committee, getting to know each other. There's a, you know, side benefit of that, too, would be, and everything would be equal.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, definitely.
And I do agree, Carrie, like to know more about sort of, are they gonna pick two? And then, you know, whatever the process may be, I guess, just kind of detailing that a bit. Will that committee vote their, their choice to submit to us then, you think?
Yeah, and I think that would come out from the process where you, as a committee, could say, well, we'd like at least two options, or do you want one? Or if there's one, and that's just, you know, really the strongest, come with that, that's all feedback, I'm sure the committee would want to know from you.
Okay.
But they can boil it down to whatever you want.
Great.
So that it's coming from, you know, it's pretty clear, based on the process that you approved, if they've got one single recommendation, then we can do that.
Okay, that sounds great.
So are we voting tonight just to approve the process? Because it says the name of the new school.
Right, I think that's more of a typo, sort of a situation. So for clarification, it is about forming a committee to.
I get a lot of emotion, I get together.
Oh, the motion is a bit more. Oh, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to mention.
We're not naming the new Cushing Hathaway school tonight.
Yeah.
For everybody.
Just getting the ball rolling, getting people together to start.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we're gonna do a process to do that.
Is there like a timeline that this has to be completed by?
Yeah, I think we, at least, technically, you got right up until the school's going in, but the earlier we can do it, like anything else, the better. Within a year, I would say, would be our goal. So this is real early, I guess the point is, this is real early. So I think what's important now is they start looking at the mascot logo, put it in the center of the gym, for example, on other places in the school. The history of each school, how is that gonna be incorporated into the new school? You know, things like that, the school can start rolling the ball on, helping the architects when they design the school, that might become part of the building of the project. So I guess the earlier we get it, the better, without rushing.
Yeah. May I ask, any other questions or anyone have a motion if they would like to put forward?
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve that the superintendent establish a representative working group of stakeholders with the charge of developing a student-led process, naming the new elementary building in mascot, reporting recommendations to the school committee for official approval and vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Kids? And second piece of that, the groundbreaking ceremony.
Right, so some more fun news is the shovels will go into the ground next fall, begin the project. Everything is, right now, is on schedule and under budget, which is good things to hear, good things to report. That being said, they're part of the MSBA process, and any process will formally start. Construction phase is the, having the groundbreaking ceremony, and then culminating with the ultimate ribbon cutting, which will be, finally start planning that, about when it's gonna open up for students, staff. So tonight is just setting a target date so that we can move, you know, there's a lot of planning that needs to go in this as well. MSBA is involved, they send people down, you know, we invite local people, like we did tonight, to come to that, so really we can get that date locked in. It's helpful to planning of this, it's pretty involved, involving both schools and getting that. So we wanted to set a date, so in working, and this, and keep in mind, this is October 3rd, so even if they start, this isn't literal shovel in the ground, so it's okay if this construction technically begins in September, and we have this, it's more ceremonial. At the beginning of a project, it's very common, so. Yeah, when we're next, we're gonna put anybody to work, we'll hopefully get everyone a nice shovel, and it'll be great. So similar to that, last recommendation, this would be, we would like to put a rain date, this is a Friday, a Friday during the school day would be something where the kids would get involved, both schools and staff, you know, community members and things like that. So, and then, and again, if you're gonna do something during the day, or anytime, I guess now, the earlier you set a date, the more people that are planning to come can put that in their calendar.
Yeah.
And the rain date will be the following Friday, if we do something outdoors, we might not, but that's just wanna put bold dates in there, lock things down for the community. The recommendation would be that a small group, just, this wouldn't be a little smaller than that, because it's more just planning, with input, certainly from Kriti, myself, Dr. Rab, and Joanne Brandalini, and Ryan Lynch, probably work together with our Vertex owners of project, Inner Architect. Again, this isn't the first time this has been done, there's a lot of models out there, so we kind of just kind of organize that. Probably over the summer, we could do that work, and then we'd be ready to roll that out for, again, I would recommend approval by the committee on what that looks like, if we miss anything, feedback, before we go out and actually do it. It's always good to get committees, entire committees' feedback on a draft plan of that goal. So this is just kind of okay in that date, first of all, the rain date, and then getting the ball rolling with a small group to kind of start planning a bit.
Take a motion on the groundbreaking ceremony. Everyone, be ready.
I make a motion that the school committee authorize the superintendent to form a small leadership working group to plan the groundbreaking ceremony for the Cushing Hathaway Building Project, with the groundbreaking date set for October 3rd, 2025, and a rain date of October 10th, 2025. The superintendent will report back with specifics of the ceremony, the school committee approval before the event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. All right, finally made it. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We've been waiting for Mr. Thomas to send our Fine and Performing Arts Department updates.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to promote some of the great things that are happening within the Fine Arts Department. I guess I would start by thanking some of my colleagues, Laura Burton, Andy Loretz, Amanda Glover, Peter Muntz, and Christine Shan for their help in this. We'll thank the students as we move through the presentation. So the idea here is that we want to show the parallels between a fine arts education and the development of 21st century skills. And I've provided three different student examples for that. The first of which is a student-directed brass quintet, and it really focuses on the concepts of leadership, initiative, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, and problem-solving. And if they want to come up, I can say a couple of words as you guys are getting settled. So I'm proud of these guys, they've done a pretty amazing job of really taking the initiative to create their own group, rehearse themselves, find the records why to perform, and to represent themselves in a way that makes us all proud. So they're gonna play a quick excerpt for you, first of all, and then I got a couple of questions for you guys, okay? I'm gonna be ready. Well done, gentlemen. We have Nikolai Volkovich right here, Liam Holden, Noah Shepherd, Drew Webster, and Brendan McCarthy. So just to highlight some of the 21st century skills, we have creativity and innovation, critical thinking and problem-solving, communication, collaboration and teamwork, adaptability and flexibility, leadership, social and cultural awareness, digital and media literacy, and emotional intelligence. So a couple of questions, as promised, guys. I don't know who wants to take this. What are the challenges and rewards of leading your own ensemble?
I think probably the biggest challenge is just coordinating, you know? I mean, it's, it's really difficult to get everyone together, get everyone on the same page, and it really forces you and like us as a group to build leadership skills amongst ourselves, and like influence each other to get there, rehearse, without having, you know, that adult figure in the room that we've had all our lives. It's allowing us to build the skills that we need to lead an ensemble on our own. And I guess the reward is kind of seeing what we can build by ourself. You know, there's, there's the aspect of being able to choose the music that we want to play and all that stuff, but I think the real reward is seeing what we've been able to do in a self-led group and being able to see the impact that that might have on kids younger than us, and being able to influence them to maybe take up the same initiative to their turn.
Yeah, well said. One more question. Are there transferable skills which you can take with you into the future that goes perhaps beyond the quintet?
Yeah, I, I think one big skill that we've learned a lot is like flexibility and like problem-solving. We've had like the challenges of finding music, organizing rehearsal time and rehearsal space, like finding gigs and coordinating those, and I think that's really taught us a lot about like how we can be flexible in those times, and also like kind of like delegate issues and solve some problems, if anyone wants to add on.
Yeah, I mean, like, we all have different sports, different other extracurricular activities, and just general, like different classes, different things to study for and give time to, so we really had to learn how to be flexible and really problem-solving, find rehearsal times, you know, whether that meant showing up to school early, doing things late at night, you know, on weekends, so we had to really like think outside the box, so that's something to build on.
Well, I can't thank you enough, thank you. And also, they're heading their way back, just as from an observer's standpoint, just to see the pride with which you guys operate is pretty cool. Thank you.
I have a question, I'll comment. No, you guys are aw, this is awesome, I love to see this. And I know, I've known Noah, Liam, and Nikolai for a few years now, just to see that you guys have grown and returned, and turned this is awesome. Two questions for you. One is, will you all continue your musical talent in college?
Yes.
And number two is, do you think that the, I know that one of the goals, or one of the things that you solved was to influence younger students. Do you think that there's younger students who will participate and create their own type of, I guess, what, ensemble or what we, what do we call this? Ensemble, that's what you think?
I mean, I've heard the freshmen and sophomores, I've heard like after our performances, I've heard other trumpets, like talking about forming their own quartets or quintets. So I feel like after our performances, it feels like a reward, knowing that possibly we've inspired other younger people to form their own groups and kind of follow what we've been doing.
Yeah, and I hope they, I hope they do, because I think, I think it's awesome, I think it's great you guys can just kind of, I mean, they can play these instruments, I think is great, but the fact that you take all this extra time, as you said, you all, or most of you do other activities as well as just music, so I think it's awesome, and hopefully you have inspired the younger kids, I'm sure you have.
Well, they definitely have, I know freshmen, sophomores who definitely look up to you guys, so inspirational. Inspirational.
Congratulations.
Thank you. On the other end of the spectrum, we have Charlie Ross, who really gave a compelling essay. I'm not sure, I hope that you had an opportunity to look that over before tonight. We have Charlie here, and I'm actually invite Charlie and Andy Loretz up to talk a little bit about his experience, um, in really building grit, determination, perseverance.
Hi, good evening, my name's Andy Loretz, I'm the elementary band teacher at all of the elementary schools in situ, and it's my honor to be here with you. So Charlie's essay reflects on his first winter concert, highlighting the emotions he experienced. He learned valuable lessons about stepping outside his comfort zone, teamwork, how to overcome challenges, uh, building confidence, grit, perseverance, emotional intelligence, and many other skills in the process. So again, if you haven't read that, I, I strongly encourage you, it brought tears to my eyes to read, uh, what he wrote, um, and it was just such a great narrative. So Charlie, I do have a couple of questions for you about, uh, your, what you wrote in your narrative. So what did you gain from this musical experience and will it help you the next time that you go through something like that?
So I think the thing that really I benefited the most from was knowing that I'm not alone, because that was the thing I was most nervous about before going into the concert. I was scared people would like point and laugh and like, because I was the only fifth grader to join band that year, or this year. And I was so scared that people were going to like make fun of me, but after the concert, I immediately understood that it wasn't just me, I was working as a team with all the other, with all my other band, like, people that played along with me and my teachers. And it made me feel better after the concert that I wasn't alone, I was with a team that played along with me.
Excellent, yeah, and do you think, uh, the lessons you learned through the, going through the anxiety of getting ready for a concert and then being through on the other side, do you feel like that's going to transfer to other situations in the future, and if so, what, what would those mean?
So, um, I think this could like help me in a lot of other situations, but one that comes to my mind is, just a small example. When I'm presenting in school with like a, I have like super stage fright, like sometimes I can't speak, like I wouldn't be able to speak now if it weren't for the concert. And like, as soon as the concert was over, my confidence just overcame that issue. And I've actually had a few presentations now that I've been speaking without stuttering, stuttering, and it wouldn't, I wouldn't have been able to like come up here and talk if it weren't for the concert. And it just really helped me be able to like help my stage fright.
Well, I can at least speak on behalf of myself that what a great presenter he is, right, like, and just an amazing speaker, so. We're, we're so proud of the work that you do in band, and we're so proud of the work that you're doing, sharing that with our whole community, so thank you for being here.
I also see my grandma.
And we have a, uh, a third example, our final example. Um, this one's pretty cool, uh, Stitch Monsters, so our grade one students, uh, created a 2D design of a Stitch Monster, and, um, they collaborated with our Gates students. Now, the Gates students had to interpret the design and then create a 3D version of it. So we're lucky enough to have two students here, Jack Ferris and Teddy Sutherland, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about the process, or we have some questions actually for them. But, uh, talk about a cool collaboration, um, and there's the products right there. So, would you?
Yeah. Can you tell us a little bit about what you think makes your monster special?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Um.
Monsters special.
Those socks.
Yes. Not all monsters wear socks, that's true. Anything else?
Um. Awards?
Mm-hmm. And then Mrs. Burton told me that the name of this monster is Rock and Roll. How'd you come up with that name, why Rock and Roll?
Because I'm a monster and wolves.
It's Rock and Roll. I like it, good name. Did you have fun doing this?
Yes.
I think you've done an amazing job, and you're excited to see what the monster really looks like.
Yeah.
So lucky. Thank you.
And Teddy, I guess from your standpoint, what was it like to like interpret someone's work within our school district and like actually create a 3D version of it?
Um, I thought it was cool, we got to work together, um, first period of just creative project, and I had lots of fun doing it.
That's cool, came out good too. Was this somehow different, knowing that your project that you were interpreting was a, like a real live person, that you were trying to, uh, match what their efforts, what they had in mind? Did that make a difference to the project?
Um, yeah, a little bit, I mean, I felt like I had a little bit of pressure because I worked with a show.
But, um, I'd just like to thank Laura and Amanda for creating an experience for students that's collaborative, it really brings a sense of community, um, very cool.
Is this the first time that you've seen your Stitch Monster in person?
Yeah.
It's a powerful moment, I know.
That is the coolest. Enjoy your five seconds of that.
And then, um, to, to cap things off, March is known as Music in Our Schools Month, and, uh, I'd like to recognize Mr. Peter Muntz for his efforts in, uh, creating a collaborative musical, virtual musical performance, um, that he, he went around to all of the elementary schools, Gates Middle School and the high school, and had different members of, uh, the music program perform and put all that together, talk about building a sense of community, it was amazing. So I hope that you had a chance to look at that, but I'd like to just thank Peter Muntz. And then finally, uh, we have a busy spring here coming, um, and I'd like to just formally invite you to any or all of these events, particularly the Spring for the Arts, which is coming up on Thursday, May 15th, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to showcase some of what we're doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thomas, for bringing, bringing art to life in here and all its different forms, so we really appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions or anything? Yeah, thank you. Thank you families for sticking it out with us. Yes, thank you. Oh, well, we'll take care of these motions. Right back to Paul.
I love that.
Oh my. Mind a judge. All right, uh, let's, let's turn it back over, turn it over to our policy stuff. I know it gets a little long. So we're here for our second reading for our technology policies. I will say, when the Google and I were in Atlanta, I did a session on, um, AI, it sounded like a listening session, we care what other, what's, what's happening in other states and districts. I think we're right on track with what a lot of people are doing, which is trying not to overdo it on policy, um, as AI is just so completely developing, and just sort of set something that we feel will help give teachers kind of what they need in order to say like, hey, I said no AI on this, and I really hate that, you know? We want teachers to feel that they have that behind them, but we don't want to be overly prescriptive or restrictive, and so I think we're right in the place where most people seem to be. So I just wanted to add that, that's been a new development since the last time we talked about these, but this is our second thing, so I'm not sure if anyone has any additional thoughts or comments. Clearly a timely subject, because it was, it was just sprinkled throughout the entire conference. And, and just the, you know, the nuances to it. Yeah, exactly. I don't have any data. That, yes, exactly. Yeah. Ryan, did you have anything else on this?
No, we just, uh, we had a suggestion at the last meeting for, um, just clarifying some language at the beginning of the, the part on cheating, we clarified that, just to essentially say it's using somebody else's work without their permission. The only other thing I would add is that based on the feedback from the last meeting, we recognize that some of the, the changes here, again, a lot of credit to Jackie Frangello, tech team, the staff have given their input, that we'll be making a plan for the implementation of the new policy, and, uh, Jackie is going to be presenting at school committee at an upcoming meeting, so some of her presentation will just detail the steps that we'll take to both, uh, keep students and staff safe and also implement some of the policy changes in a way that's manageable. So, uh, we just acknowledge that, you know, some of this has changed, and we'll, we're really happy to have a policy that's going to, um, be updated, and also a plan for just communicating that with, uh, students, staff, and families.
Thank you, appreciate that. Additional? Take a motion on these. Yes, I just, I double-checked, these are the right.
They're right, they are.
I just, I mean, I was going to ask that.
I make a motion that the school committee, uh, vote to approve the updated tech policies IJNDV, IJNDC, IJNDVA as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have some old business here, the last day of school vote, which we do. No, no days. I have no questions, anyone?
It's around the corner.
Nothing to question. Oh, I thought you should have had a question. No comment, no nothing, just yay. Yeah? With that right in the minute, yay. So just to remind us, this is a Friday. Friday, June 20th, 2025, yep. So we will have day. Thursday, no school, Friday, half-day. This is as.
June 19th.
As it was laid out, June 20th.
Yep, right, so we have no school and no night school.
Unfortunately. Don't worry, we have solved that problem like forward.
Hopefully.
Well, hopefully we have.
Hopefully we have.
If you know people were going to take one out.
And 20th is a half-day with no lunch, so it's a little bit super short. I wish we could sleep. If the kids are back home. I'm not going to, I'm just going to go.
Let's just, let's just vote on it.
Okay. Okay.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the last day of school, June 20th, 2025, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have some approval of minutes from March 24.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the March 24, 24th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Warrens, nothing for today. Uh, no correspondences, I am aware of.
Just, I don't know if you mentioned something, what's new with, the governor extended the.
I did not mention, so yeah.
I don't know if that goes under other business or whatever, I don't really track what it was, but I think two year, two more year, two, two-year time.
A hybrid meeting.
A higher meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, some, some states don't do that. No, many do either. Right, so we're lucky at this point, especially on a Monday night, I think. Yeah. Great.
I just have, I just have a correction. Because I did the, um, weekly update, my focus, we said that this Wednesday's meeting started at 6:00.
Starts at 5:30. Oh, 5:30. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
5:30 starts at.
Maria, I can't remember where we landed on if we were going to just.
I don't know that I'm ready.
Okay.
We wanted to share a little bit about just like what we learned at the conference that we were just at, but I, I don't know that my mind is quite.
You didn't get home until like late last night. We got like very late.
I'm not ready mentally.
Yeah, that's fine.
I did take notes and like we are excited to share with you some of the stuff that we, yeah.
Great, great.
It was great, it was really fun, and it was neat to just kind of be in the national space with other school board people.
Does anybody call it a school board now? Yeah. Just a short, sort of.
Yeah.
About seventy people attended our, our session. Yeah, this, so. They didn't do any sort of, they didn't collect any feedback, not like on their side, I know, but we did get a lot of people who came up to us at the end and said it was really helpful, and that was nice. Fantastic, okay. Any other future agenda items?
Maria and I need to do the data.
So whatever you, I think we should look at our goals.
Yeah, we need to look at our goals.
Data.
And our next formal meeting isn't until the end?
Right. Right.
Town meeting.
So next meeting will be, yeah, town meeting on the 14th, and then we jump to May then for the school committee meeting back here at I. Okay. All right.
Sick of the mild.
Get you out of here by 7:00.
Don't say that, Nicole, you just take stuff.
Probably true. All right. Nothing further, let's take a motion to adjourn here.
Motion to adjourn at 7:15.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.